Welcome, welcome to tonight's regular Duluth School Board meeting. It is Tuesday, September 20th, it is 6:37. And I just want to welcome our community and school board members. We are here at East High School to hold our monthly meetings because we are in the process of building our new business service building. And so we are this school year, holding our regular monthly meetings here at East High School. So I just want to thank the administration and the building supervisors for allowing us to use the media center tonight. And so again, welcome to Duluth's regular monthly school board meeting. And I'm going to turn it over to Clerk Oswald to take the role.
Member Edar is excused for tonight. So then we have Member Kirby.
Here.
And Member Lachlan Kemp.
Here.
Chair Volcal.
Here.
And Member Oswald, here I am. Members Sedeston.
Here.
Member Sandholm.
Present.
Superintendent Magus.
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Bonds.
Present.
Business Services Director Zunich.
Here.
HR Director Severance.
Here.
Board Secretary Pickett.
Here.
Denfeld Student Rep Saraya Crawford.
Here.
And East Student Rep Eileen Nos.
Here.
We are all present except for Member Edar.
Thank you, thank you. I'm going to rise and ask the community to rise with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Board members, you've gotten and received the board book and you have looked at the agenda. I'm asking for approval of item number four, the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Member Lachlan Kemp, do I have a second to approve the agenda?
Second.
Member Sandholm. All those in favor of approval of the agenda tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carries six zero, thank you. So now we're on to our agenda for tonight. Number five is school and community recognition. And so I will turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Bonds for our community and public recognition tonight. Thank you.
Thank you and good evening, everyone.
Welcome.
Thank you. Dear members of board, tonight I would like to recognize two of our digital innovation specialists. Parker Huber is here and Brianna Soltner. She's not there to make it tonight, but we have Parker here and I'm glad he was able to make it. The job of the digital innovation specialists are many. They answer phone calls regarding technology questions. They assist parents with our learning management system. They help distribute and collect approximately 4,000 Chromebooks in less than a week during the beginning of the year to again issue them back out to students. And they do so, so much more. This spring and summer, Parker and Brianna went above and beyond. They recorded interviews with students and alumni and they created a video for our professional development day called entitled, "All Staff Impact." The video, which has been shared with you and I've seen as well, and they did an awesome job. It was one of the highlights of the professional development day. And I want to say kudos to you Brianna for doing that.
I appreciate that.
The video shows the impact that teachers, prepared professionals, food service workers, bus drivers, clerical staff, and others, and the impact they have on students and this community. We want to thank Parker and Brianna for their hard efforts and their work. And this wonderful project that shows our staff are appreciated. So congratulations.
Say folks, I just wanted to take this opportunity, if you guys really liked the movie and the show that we saw at the Back to School event and the work that all the digital innovation specialists have been doing, I would really implore you and encourage you for the decision makers in this room to think about continuing funding our position for years to come. Thank you. Oh, sorry. Oh, yes, sir, Mr. Magus.
I just wanted to say thank you, Parker. And the film we put together was very moving. I think it was very impactful to all of us and it reminded us of our core purpose. And I think that really coming back this year, reconnecting to that core purpose was vital for all of us. And I want to say thanks for helping us do so. Also, today happens to be IT Professionals Day. And so I wanted to thank you and the rest of the team, as well as Holden and Jack, and all of our other IT professionals in our service of student staff and families who do a wonderful job. And it's very much appreciated.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks, Parker. Any other board comments or?
I have a second also.
Yeah, thanks, Parker. Again, thank you Assistant Superintendent Bonds too for bringing that forward. Next on our agenda is our public comment. So can we just get that list? And then as we get that list, typically always, you know, we reread our civility code of ethics. And we also have Clerk Oswald just go over a few. And we have three speakers tonight. So I've asked Member Lachlan Kemp to read our civility vision.
Thank you. Community vision and priorities for Duluth Public Schools. We will build on our shared beliefs and values in unity, high achievement, and responsible use of resources to create Duluth Public Schools and classrooms that are safe, supportive, and inclusive. We will work to inspire every student to achieve their potential and prepare students to lead productive, fulfilling lives as citizens of Duluth and the wider world. Eleven tools of civility, which we adopt every year. This school board recognizes eleven tools of civility that will provide increased opportunities for civil discourse in order to find positive resolutions to the issues that face our community. These tools include, one, pay attention, two, listen, three, be inclusive, four, don't gossip, five, show respect, six, be agreeable, seven, apologize, eight, give constructive criticism, nine, take responsibility, ten, be honest and care for others, and eleven, show your evidence, share your reasoning. From the speaker piece Civility Project with the Duluth Community Foundation.
Thank you. And then Clerk Oswald will also just review again the guidelines that are part of our policy for public comment.
So it's information you need to know when you sign up to speak at board meetings. Persons wishing to address the school board must sign in prior to the meeting listing their name in the matter of which you will speak. If you have any handouts for the board, please give them to the school board secretary over there, Ms. Pickett. Persons addressing the board will speak in the order in which they signed up. Each person addressing the board will have three minutes total. When speaking, the use of names or any information that identifies as a specific individual is legally prohibited and you will be asked to end your comments. Persons addressing the board may not merge their time in order to allow one person to speak for more than three minutes. The court of the board, me, I will start the stoplight timer right here at the start of each person's time. If I remember, I have forgotten on occasion and I deeply apologize as it's my job, but you know, we all make mistakes. A green means go, yellow means start wrapping up, and red means to stop. When the red light comes on, the chair will gavel you to signal you to stop. Persons addressing the board shall confine their comments to matters pertaining to the agenda or relevant matters of administrative concern. And in the interest of respect for each public comment speaker, please hold any commentary during the speaker's time until we are finished. Thank you.
With that, we have three speakers tonight. Our first speaker is Kevin Hessian. On deck is Jim Olson. And we have a nice table, or you can stand wherever you feel more comfortable. But the table is a great place too, because then the mics will pick you up.
Thank you. First, I want to thank the school board for allowing time for comments. My name is Kevin Hessian. It was my privilege to serve as the orchestra director at Brigades Middle School for six years, retiring in June of this year. The last time I appeared before you was at your March meeting at Denfeld High School to commemorate Music in Our Schools Month. You'll recall that my Ordene Advanced Orchestra played for you before the start of the meeting. Just a few weeks earlier, they had earned highest honors at the Minnesota Middle Level Music Festival and they were preparing for their performance at Orchestra Hall in Minneapolis in April. At that time, I felt a wonderful sense of pride and hope for the future, which I feel was shared by my students. These thirty-three, seventh, eighth grade students, along with their peers in the band orchestra at Ordene and Lakewood Park, had weathered some difficult times, to say the least, during the two previous years of COVID. During most of the 2021 school year, rehearsals were held only via Google Meet and students submitted videos of their playing for feedback. Sixth grade students were not allowed to use instruments, so learning was done using A-cartons for violins and pine boards for cellos and basses. But one of the hardest things about teaching that year was that the co-teaching positions in band and orchestra, which I had had before previous years, were not funded during the year of COVID, which was very, very difficult. When we returned to school last year, we were relieved to find that the district was able to fund co-teaching positions again for middle school band and orchestra using federal ESER funds. Well, I can't say names. My co-teacher and I were glad to work together again. And I can relate countless times when her presence in our team helped students to succeed. Last September, sixth and seventh grade students were allowed to use real instruments in school for the first time since before COVID. Words cannot describe the joy in the classroom that first day they received their instruments. And I can't tell you how happy I was to recycle fifty A-carts. Learning to play a stringed instrument, however, is a complex task. It requires precise motor skills, as well as the student's ability to master that strange language of music notation. Without sufficient guides and support, this can be very difficult for many students. In about the second week of rehearsing with instruments last year, one cello player in beginning orchestra, let's call them Kim, not their real name, shut down completely during the rehearsal. They were sitting in a fetal position with their cello on the floor beside them. I was conducting the class of about forty beginners, so it was really difficult for me to stop. But I would have had to stop rehearsal to help them if I needed to. Thankfully, my co-teacher was there, saw the student in distress, took them in the back lesson room, worked with them one-on-one in a very kind way, and the change in that person's outlook from then on through the year was amazing. That person succeeded in orchestra that year and found many friends in orchestra. As I said, the overwhelming feelings I had when I stood before you in March were pride and optimism. Sadly, that all changed the last few weeks of the last school year when we learned from our principal that the ESER-funded positions, for some reason, would not be funded this school year. I wondered if that was good news, meaning that the district would go back to the earlier model of using school funds to fund the co-teaching positions. However, as the new year has unfolded, it appears that there are no co-teaching positions in band and orchestra at our middle schools. And my fear is that may be the plan for the year. And our students are still recovering from years of COVID. With the passing of Queen Elizabeth last week, let's be reminded of the importance we have as leaders to support a sheated consistency in the lives of those we love. A nearly fifty percent cut in staffing and instrumental music teaching at the middle school has already begun impacting our students, and I know that. So please, I urge, I urge the board to find the funding to refund those positions which I had nearly all the time I was an orchestra director under a team. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Jim Olson and on deck is Pamela Foster.
Good evening. Many of you know me, but making it official, I'm Jim Olson. I'm a member of the Duluth Federation of Teachers and an elementary teacher at Myers Wilkins. I'm proud to have served the Hillside community for well over twenty years. This year, the DFT wants to make sure that everyone on the board knows that we are putting students first with a focus on class size, counselors, and community. During the COVID time, we saw our enrollment drop. But now as class sizes are beginning to climb back up over thirty in upper elementary and into the upper twenties in kindergarten, we see teachers that are burning out because they are unable to meet all their students' needs and feel like failures because they see the look on their students' faces when they're able to help them. Middle school and high school teachers are seeing additions of five to seven students per class, which is like adding a whole extra class on their caseload, increasing the amount of prep time and grading that they need. The Duluth Public Schools is nowhere near the ASCA's recommendation of one to two hundred and fifty students and counselors. Elementary teachers are seen like Swiss Army knives, but we are not trained to support all the emotional needs of the students. We don't have time built into our schedule to adequately teach second step, nor do we have the skills to do it. Our community is very important to us. But for teachers to support our learning community, we need more than lip service at the beginning of the year at a prep rally in a need app. What we need is adequate time built into our staff development days to complete the required training the district is asking us to do. We need prep time to be able to make lessons and assess student learning. We need that prep time to be able to communicate with parents. And we need that adequate prep time to collaborate with our colleagues. We need site-based decision-making for professional development, rather than a one-size-fits-all model that the district has been using. We need safety and support structures in place and available when needed. We need two-way communication so that issues around topics like the new sub-hiring system have multiple viewpoints, so we can foresee problems and solve them before it becomes a reality in the classrooms. Thank you for your time.
And our final speaker is Pamela, isn't it Foster?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I wrote it back.
That's okay.
Took notes on my phone, so I apologize. I'll be reading from my phone. Good evening. My name is Pamela Foster and I'm a member of Duluth Federation of Teachers, a third-grade teacher at Lakewood Elementary School, and a parent of a fifth grader at Lester Park Elementary. So I kind of have a little bit of everything. I'm here to advocate for both teachers at my school, as well as other schools, and their students dealing with large class sizes. Every year, numbers seem to rise or stay in the upper twenties or lower thirties. And teachers continue to have things added to their plates. When this is addressed with the administration, the response tends to be, well, they're the same at other schools. And I think we're at a point now where we need to stop thinking that that's okay and that's a good enough response. And we need to start doing something about it as a staff and as an administration. Just because class sizes are large at other schools does not mean that's okay. If anything, I believe that means we need to advocate more for other schools and be advocating for our students and for our teachers. I think we need to do better for everyone. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment tonight. Thank you. Thanks for the community for coming out. We appreciate it, we really do. So next on our agenda is number seven. It is reading petitions. The reading of petitions, our communication that we have done. That brings us to item number eight, which is the report of the superintendent. And it has three elements. It has reports from our student reps, it has the superintendent report, and it has just a review of the schedule of upcoming meetings and events. So I'm turning it over to Superintendent Magus.
Thank you very much, Chair Volcal. And as usual, we will start with our student reports from Ms. Crawford and Ms. Nos. I'm not sure who would like to go first today.
I'll go first. Hi, everyone. The school's back in session this month. Our first week of school, we had an assembly, tailgate, football game, and dance. The assembly was planned by the executive board and was a huge success. We introduced clubs, played games, introduced various staff members. We were also able to get each grade to dress in a different color, a different school color. So the gym was filled with a lot of school spirit. The tailgate was moved inside due to poor weather. But the turnout was so good with students eating hot dogs, playing cornhole, and getting face paint before the game. After the game, exec and the student section were asked to help clean the leechers before the dance could start. We had no prior knowledge that this would be expected of us, as normally that's a job that custodians fill. We were happy to do it, but we wonder why this job was left to the students and not the custodians. We know that being short-staffed is an issue and fully understand that. But we were just wondering if there was something we might be able to do or something the district could change that might increase interest in the position. I would love your feedback on this, so please feel free to reach out about it. The dance after the game was also a success of minimal, well, sorry, words. Minimal complications. Throughout the week, we sold shirts, bandanas, trucker hats, and bucket hats. And many people were excited to have some fresh East apparel for the start of the year. Many clubs are getting things around to start up again. A lot of them meet during win throughout the school year. And since we have a new system for win periods that's still being set up, many haven't met yet, but wins should start back up next week, I believe. Association is preparing for homecoming in October. They're planning spirit days, after-school activities, and assemblies. Homecoming week is the tenth through the fourteenth of October. And volleyball, soccer, cross-country, and football are some of the sports that are in season right now. Despite not always winning, the atmosphere in the stands is always quite lively. So far compared to last year, East sportsmanship and enthusiasm has definitely improved significantly. Our fall musical, The Little Mermaid, will be in the beginning of November and rehearsals are well underway right now. This Friday, there will be a Victory Day football game during the halftime of the actual football game. And so students who have disabilities that inhibit their ability to participate in the actual team will be playing during halftime. We're really excited for them to have that opportunity as well. Student form applications went out today. And I'm really excited for it to start up again in the first week of October. And NHS has their induction ceremony tomorrow at seven. And a lot of seniors are excited to help their peers and community this year. And that's all I have for you guys.
All right. Well, to start the school year off, we have our freshman orientation on the, on September ninth. The class of 2026 came in, they met their link leaders, got a tour of the school, and just were able to engage with seniors and juniors and able to build connections with people in their school. Afterwards was the hundred kickoff on the same day, like two hours later, where everybody, where all students could come in and get forms, take pictures, and also get their samples. Next thing I want to put on is, you know, our school had the Khumbaya on Juneteenth Story Play. It was a success. The students loved the play and they got to meet the cast and they learned a lot. Also, the sped classes, the special education classes, also got to interact with some of the class, with some of the cast as well as they came into their classes. Our school has begun a new, has begun a new group called Gold, gathering our leaders determining solutions. It's a diverse group of students where they would meet regularly and provide solutions to different problems that students bring to them and that the school brings to them as well. Our school started checking circles during their wins to implement restorative practices. For our fall activities, this Friday, we have High Day, where the homecoming candidates will be introduced and the freshmen will learn more about our school. Speaking of homecoming, the coronation is Thursday on September twenty ninth. Our principal is very dedicated to getting our school spirit back. So hall decorating for homecoming will be September twenty sixth to the twenty eighth. There will be a judging on the twenty ninth. And the award, and whoever wins will get an award of travel plaque at the assembly on Friday the thirtieth. The homecoming assembly and dance will be on Friday, September thirtieth. And our fall play is She Kills Monsters. It's a D and B, Dragons and Dungeons play. Auditions already began yesterday and they will continue today. And callbacks will be Wednesday. And last thing, oh, I'm not last thing. Another thing I wanted to bring up was the Voices Framework, which is supposed to be approved by the school board, hopefully today, where Minnesota Learner Center Network and Captive Media will be coming in and working with students to capture videos and hopefully give that back to the teachers where they can study it, analyze it, and learn what they could be doing better in their classrooms. Lastly, we have our super fans that have been constantly going to football games, volleyball games, all the sports in season, doing chants and dressing up in different costumes to really get the school spirit back.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate those student reports. It's great to see excitement in the schools and so many fun things going on. Been able to participate in some throughout, as have many of the other administrators, whether it's assemblies at Ordene or football game at Denfeld or whatever it may be. It's great to, great to see those events coming to life. Regarding my report tonight, I have several topics that I was going to share relatively briefly on. In addition to the student representative reports, we have a, just kind of a recap of our Safe Learning Plan. Nothing major new, but just want to recap a bit of information there. Brief update that we've done since our last board meeting on strategic planning. An update related to the school resource officers contract. A little bit kind of reminding folks about what we did during our U N D and the Community Back to School event. And we actually have a video, it's going to show very brief. An update on the Khumbaya, the Juneteenth Story events that we held at Denfeld on Friday and Saturday, as well as some next steps we want to talk to the board about related to Martin Luther King Junior Day and Juneteenth holiday recognition. So regarding the Safe Learning Plan, just to reiterate, that the rules are that if you were exposed to COVID-19, it is a strong suggestion that you wear a mask for ten days and get tested on the fifth day, regardless of vaccination status. That's a bit of a change with the CDC. They used to require, they used to require people to stay home for that period of time. But it is now that individuals need to monitor for symptoms and test and just make sure that you're wearing a mask for ten days. No quarantine is, as I just said, no quarantine is necessary unless those symptoms are gone. And that goes for the household contacts as well. The district is still requiring those who test positive for COVID-19, regardless of vaccination status, to isolate for five days. And they can return on day six if the positive individual wears a well-fitting mask and is fever-free for twenty-four hours without the use of fever-reducing medications and other symptoms have improved. That's not the case for me either, it was one room perhaps, not. But basically, just making sure that we're following masking protocol if there's potential exposure as well. But just to remind folks, I know that there's a little bit of a difference in some of the, whether something is strongly recommended by the CDC. But these are things that are actually, the part about the wearing the mask, if you have been a household member, that part is something that is required by the Minnesota Department of Health and the St. Louis County Health Department. Agreed about those, those protocol within our Safe Learning Plan. And we are, we are planning to, you know, to enforce that in a supportive way. But if there were staff members that had tested positive for COVID and came back and was refusing to wear a mask, that would be something that we would look at as a potential human resources issue and have to move forward there. And likewise, if a student was coming and refusing to wear a mask, masks would be provided in each case, but that might become a disciplinary issue. So we are trying to make sure that we are enforcing those policies and procedures carefully in support of keeping everybody safe. Strategic planning update. I know we've talked a lot about the strategic plan in the past couple of weeks, including a update during our community, the committee, the whole. Just two things I want to focus on. One is that we are urging all eligible students, families, and staff to fill out those desired daily experience surveys as soon as possible. I want to thank Adele for a lot of creativity and how she's been reminding people and reminding people. And I also want to apologize to anybody who's been reminded many times and has already filled out that survey. If you are feeling bugged by it, try to use that energy to encourage another family member, staff member, or student to fill out theirs. And then also, last Thursday, we engaged in our school and department need, our data, I'm sorry, department data needs and analysis. We looked at various strengths of our classrooms and schools, also the different work within departments. And it was really an opportunity for us And it was really an opportunity for us to, to have deep conversation for about three hours about what were some of the strengths and some of the challenges of the various departments. That, that's going to be used for us to start additional work on our operational plan so that we can think of what are those next steps. As far as who is involved in that, there was the strategic planning team, as well as building leadership team representatives, department leaders and members of our continuous improvement teams which have been included. So strong focus on continuous improvement efforts throughout the district. And once again, that strategic planning website is linked there within the presentation if you want to find out more information on where we're at. School Resource Officer Contract Update. Pleased to announce that the Duluth Public Schools and Duluth Police Department have worked collaboratively together on the new contract proposal. They have significant language changes based on the community feedback that we received. The contract details have been finalized and this will be brought to city council later this month and will be brought forward to the board in October through our normal process. So our school resource officers are operating under the spirit of that new contract and have been since, since the beginning of the school year. But the formalization of the contract through the city council and then subsequently by the school board, should you choose to do so, would take place in October. And again, that, that content and philosophical changes in that new contract, they really respect or reflect, respect and reflect the desire and responsibility that both the police department and schools feel to reduce disproportionate outcomes for historically underserved population and also to advance positive relationships for improved student outcomes. So those will be, that will be moving forward through the city council later this month as well as to the board in October. Our Unity in the Cube Community Back to School Celebration was a great success. We had over 4,000 people at Bayfront and I want to give a huge thank you to Mr. Bonds for, for starting the idea as well as the entire team. Many, many people, everybody involved. Adele did a lot of advertising, Patty and Kayla did a lot of coordinating. Patty and others were grabbing snack, picking up snacks in U-Haul trucks throughout the weekend and really working hard to make it happen. I hope the video, the sound will work, but I'm going to try that. This was drone video footage of the event. So, the report switches on to some advertisements or something. But that was a great, great event. I think it was the first of many annual Unity in our Community events that we hope to have. Hopefully not all of them with me in the dunk tank, hopefully, no, I'm just kidding. But that was fun. And Mr. Bonds was, was personing the grill and many others were involved in serving too. So great, great work. Another great event is our student representative, Ms. Crawford noted, was the Kumbaya, the Juneteenth story, events that were held at Denfeld on Friday morning and evening and Saturday morning. That was a play produced, written by playwright Rose McGee on the meeting of Juneteenth. There was a student presentation at Denfeld on Friday morning, which included a brilliant spoken word poem by our very own Ms. Crawford. And she, it was, it was very, very powerful and, and I think for any of you that saw it, it was definitely a mic drop, let your heart moment. And then we had a community presentation Friday evening with community conversation led by Carl Crawford, the human, the Human Rights Officer for City Duluth. And then on Saturday, there was the Minnesota Humanities Group that produced the event, held a brunch and cafe conversation opportunity at Denfeld on Saturday morning. And we had great sweet potato pie presented as, as a, as a kind of recognition gift by the Sweet Potato Comfort Pie Company, which, if you read about it, it's a pretty impressive story. And then here on the slide is a picture of, of the playwright Ms. McGee, Mr. Crawford, Mr. Bonds and myself. Along with that, one thing that, when I've worked in a number of different districts, some, some districts have had Martin Luther King Junior off, others have had it on. We don't have Martin Luther King Junior as a day with students. So it is a day that students and teachers are able to collect on the day and engage in community events, which I think is important. Our principals are off during that time as well, but there are other staff members who are required to work because it is not yet formally recognized as a holiday by the district. We also, with the national designation as, as Juneteenth is a federal holiday, there were questions about should we recognize Juneteenth? And it felt from, from us that there was kind of a moral imperative that if we're going to recognize Juneteenth, which we thought was important, it was also important for us to, to have recognition of Martin Luther King Junior Day. So we are looking at bringing forward recommendations to the board after we go through a little bit more internal conversation and make sure things are ready next month to hopefully seek for approval for the formal recognition of those two important dates. The work we're doing around equity and around making sure that we're serving and hearing the voices of historically underserved students and the voices of every student, staff and family member in the district is very important. We believe that recognition of these two days will help us do so. Working with Director Severance, I think that we, we can do so with minimal, minimal economic or workload impact of it. So it's, it's definitely a win-win in many, many different regards. So we'll have more information coming forward in the, in that spot. That concludes my presentation of Superintendent. Any questions?
Questions from board members for Superintendent on his report? So I'm just, I'll, I'll just take a minute and just, so when, when Superintendent talks about the updated COVID guidelines, I just want to point out too that, you know, it's still a pretty visible place on our website. That if families aren't tuning in tonight or tomorrow when this is posted, that our, our website still contains a, a big icon on COVID protocols. And I, I also even think that Superintendent, I don't know, I'm not saying that we have to do this, but even your comments tonight, just your little slide could also maybe be posted right up there as well. So they don't have to dig into that document. But I'm really glad to see that our COVID protocols are for, still first and foremost on our website. I just have a question, Superintendent Vegas, you, you talked about the language on the SRO contract. It was, you know, the, the condition that came through our stakeholder meeting about advancing relationships stronger in student relationships. And then what, what, you said something before that, I think it was on.
Sure. Basically focusing on practices that would reduce the disproportionate outcomes of historically underserved students. Currently, we have disproportionate, negatively disproportionate outcomes for, for students of generally BIPOC families who end up with higher arrest rates, higher ticket rates, also higher suspension and other, other disciplinary issues. And quite often those areas fall into things for things like disrespect or disorderly conduct or things that are more subjective in nature. It's not necessarily for something that's kind of a black or white, somebody brought a gun or somebody punched somebody in the face or something like that. But it's, it's, there, there is an air of subjectivity to some of those areas and that's something that we want to make sure we continue to explore. Also making sure that we're continuing training on things like implicit bias training and relationship building and trauma sensitivity and all those things we're working on as a district staff. But Mr. Bonds, you might be able to speak more to some of the things included in the contract?
Actually, you captured most of them and I guess, I guess I would have forgotten when we present the contract at the next board meeting to go looking for it.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then again, I just really appreciate the highlighting of unity in our, in our community and, and our Juneteenth, along with a number of, you know, positive things that have happened, you know, as that. I, I really appreciate our public comment and, and our challenges. We all, we all know challenges that, and we appreciate community that comes forward to share those too. But I also feel at school board meetings, it's appropriate for the school board and for administration to really lift up the things that are doing well and going well so that, you know, we, we can celebrate and, and know too that we still have work to do and we still appreciate the voices that come in and share those with us as well. But, so, remember.
Just, just real quick, and so with the plan to share the SRO contract at the call meeting in October? Prior, prior to our next October?
Yes, we're going to follow the normal process for, for, and actually, we could have more conversation, call paths with the board desires. We were going to follow the normal process, which would be to take it to our, our finance committee and then the regular school board meeting to follow that path. Because there's already been conversations regarding the recommendations. Those recommendations have not changed, that I presented multiple times before. They're just embedded now and actually in the contract we will be presenting at the finance committee.
I also want to reiterate for the public and others too, that, and for the board, of course, that the delay in completion of the contract, it wasn't about any sort of disagreement between the police department and the, the school district. It came down to there were multiple leadership transitions between, with, with the police department and with the school district and, and just some of the making sure that the needle was threaded with, with all documentation was, was important. And really the, the finances were, were embedded in one part of the contract, but then there, there was another document that had been worked on and was planned for inclusion by the police department. It wasn't that there was disagreement or conflict or drama about it. It was just a need to make sure that those, those two, two elements came together. The reason why we wanted to pause was we also highly, highly valued getting this right. Wanted to make sure our, our i's were dotted and our t's were crossed and that the language was truly reflective of a, a deep, deep commitment we have to the community and a deep process of engagement that Mr. Bonds and others led with Marnita's table throughout the past year. We felt like it would be a huge disservice if we were to bring forward a contract that didn't, didn't reflect the sentiments of our whole community.
Were there any other comments?
Yeah, I just had a couple. One, a question about masks. Are we still ask, offering free masks at the different school sites, you know, at the office where people sign in? That kind of thing. I know I've been to two elementary schools in the last few days and I know they were there, but I wasn't sure that.
We got masks available. We also, as I mentioned, if, if there was a situation where maybe we had an employee or a student or, or somebody who had been exposed that needed a mask, we would always want to make sure that we offered that and provided that if there was, if there was that need.
Okay, okay, great. And then my other comment, kind of wrapped into what Chair Local talked about too about, you know, I, I know I find myself at, at the beginning of the school year especially and wherever I might be, where there are parents or, or caregivers, I tend to ask them, how is the start of school going and to get feedback. I just, this morning I was in line someplace and I heard from a parent who has a sixth grader and a ninth grader and an elementary. And so, you know, new into the, the middle school and the high school and, and knew only us a couple of years here at Duluth and just had a great conversation with this woman about, you know, the, what the start of the school year was like. So I, I really, yeah, I really buy into that importance of us as board members to really be talking very informally as well as with families and students about, you know, how, how school is going and getting feedback. And I really totally love our student rep reports. And so keep sharing each month as we're picking up this school year all the many different activities that are going on. That's really helpful for us to know and, and to hear. And so, so thank you so much.
Superintendent Vegas.
Along with just trying to keep things positive, and I, I think it's important that we go into things with vulnerability and openness and positivity. And I sometimes joke that if, if you can't laugh with me, then feel free to laugh at me. And so, and I, that's part of the dunk tank piece and things like that. The reason why I say that is I was nominated by the, there's a fundraiser through Minnesota Ballet and they are having a fundraiser on September 30th. It's sort of about dancing with the local celebrities. And so I'll be performing there and, and showing people my two left feet. And so if there are members of the board or members of the community that would like to get some, some humor out of my, my dancing abilities, that will be an opportunity for fun.
Student rep, Soraya.
To just add to the theme of bringing positive things that are going around in our school buildings, I just wanted to point out that I believe Denfeld is being, is doing a really jo- a great job of being progressive. We recently got an equity team that our, our principal and our administrative team put together. And I thought that was really awesome.
Thank you. Well, let's just keep, keep the vibe going. But like I said, I appreciate also knowing that there's concerns and there's things we need to keep working on. But, you know, it's always, it's always great to understand that, you know, there's a lot of great things going on in our district and unity in the schools is a, is just a great way to kick things off and, and keep us focused as well. Next on our agenda is our schedule of meetings and events. And we get that from Executive Secretary Ficat every week. And so we are here tonight at our regular board meeting and we have Education Equity Advisory Committee next Thursday, September 29th at 5 o'clock at Lake Superior College. I believe that Member Sadowski is on, is our rep on that. Are there two of you or is it you two? Member Oswald is also on the Education Equity. And so we look forward to just maybe a brief recap when you come back next month. And then we're, we're not, we have a policy on October 4th and we have our Committee of the Whole meeting on October 4th as well. Is there any additions that anyone can know of on our calendar? Again, a number of us have other committees that we serve on for the good of the school board in our community and just other, in our district as well. And I always remind and, and look forward to board members taking an opportunity at the end of board meetings to share with what, what kinds of things are happening at those meetings. That brings us to number nine, the report of our standing committees. And the order tonight is our Committee of the Whole, then our Policy and then our HR Business. And remember, these are, these are really summaries and reflections back on those committee meetings that happened over the last few weeks, just kind of to allow our community to see that. We pass it then as an action item, anything that we, we had there. And then again, it's really important for our community to know that those committee meetings are also open to the public. They're up at our United Healthcare Facility and our, and our offices up there. And we really encourage community members to come there. It is a non-voting meeting and it's a non-public comment meeting, but it is a valuable opportunity for community and staff to come and, and, and hear the presentations and to ask, watch the board ask questions and see us talk through ideas on those things. So I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Bonds, who's really our Committee of the Whole leader there. And so it's yours.
Thank you, Chair Local. And I too would like to welcome families to also join us during the county meeting at any point in time. So go through this very quickly because some of these things have been covered already. So there was a presentation regarding the strategic planning process that Superintendent has already covered. has already covered today. I also just want to remind the community that you can also go to our district website. There is a link for the strategic plan, um, and there's a lot of information. I also want to highlight that in there, paying particular attention to the things we keep talking about, um, our desired daily experiences. I know there's often, um, questions or comments regarding how we're considering the desires or the wishes, um, our students, our staff and our families. Um, we have used the process called the desired daily experiences and that a summary of that information can be found there. So again, on our website, there is a link for our strategic plan. Uh, go there and you will be able to find some information related to what our families, students and staff are asking regarding their, uh, experiences with us. There was also a presentation given by, um, Director Larva. Um, she provided an update regarding the secondary scheduling task force. During that process, um, Ms. Larva provided information regarding, uh, some potential changes to the middle school schedule that we are considering. And so again, it's a great opportunity to watch that, um, presentation to get some more information regarding some potential changes to the middle school schedule for next year. Another presentation that was given was provided by Jake Lorenz. He is our Climate Coordinator, provided an update regarding our suspension and bullying data. Um, it was a really good conversation because it really highlights, uh, some of the things that are happening in our sites regarding, uh, suspension that are given. It unfortunately highlights some disproportionality as it, that exists in our data. But we also had a great opportunity to start sharing some of the things that we're doing on our site specifically. Um, Principal Tuscan was there, Principal Krasnichek, he was also present at the meeting. They both had data that, um, where there are significant numbers as well as disproportionality that exists, uh, at those sites, uh, according to the data. But they were there to also present information related to how they're trying to change those things by sharing all of the different support structures we have in place now in both, um, in both, um, Lincoln Middle School as well as, uh, Denfield High School and they were there to provide that information. So again, a great opportunity to hear some of those supports and structures that are now in place for this coming year in hopes to reduce the number of suspensions that are provided. And a couple of things include, there are, um, various programs on the in-school suspension, um, or alternative to suspension program that has also been implemented at both sites. And there is, um, another support program that is also being, uh, adopted and implemented at both sites that provide proactive services and supports to students. So, old schools complement to them, are really aggressively thinking about how to support students in a different way and a more restorative way and not leverage or use the tool of suspension only to address issues. So compliments to, to those sites. And there was a, uh, as you can see, an agenda, the SRO update was going to be provided, but at that point in time, we had some tweaking still that needed to be done. And thankfully, as Superintendent has already shared, we do have a, a final draft of the SRO contract that has all of the, um, desired, uh, information we would like to have as part of that contract. And we will be, I will be providing an update or the board will be providing an update during the Policy Committee to the Finance Committee and then the, uh, Board Meeting next month for final approval. And that concludes the update.
Any questions? Member Lopwood.
Not so much a question, but just a, a comment and I apologize, I was out of town so I, I did listen to the, uh, Cow Meeting and, uh, the documents right here and read through them, um, in preparation for tonight's meeting. But I really appreciated, uh, uh, the many discussions now that have been, uh, continuing on, uh, the strategic plan that we're doing as a district. And so really appreciated you having that presentation. Um, I, I, I think that, um, we really are working to get the community and, and parents and family input and staff input on, on this, uh, on the strategic plan and just kind of, that presentation really helped raise the importance of it, I think. Uh, as a board member, I appreciated, uh, uh, one of the slides, it was, uh, on page sixteen, um, where just reiterated, and we, we've talked about this at our board retreats, um, the different, uh, leadership levels of influence that we have and just what our roles are as school board members, what our roles are as principals and kind of, uh, down the line. And I, I really, um, just really have appreciated as a board member, the emphasis on us educating the community on, uh, the government's role that the school board plays. And so I just, uh, I guess in general, I wanted to say I appreciated that presentation, but particularly, um, as I think a lot about my role of in the community as a, a school board member and helping the community understand that the government's role that we play. And so, um, thanks for spending a lot of time on that and I have the Cow Meeting.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Again, yeah, I thought that, uh, again, just a, uh, reflection for our community too to, to really, this was really a, um, had a lot of presentations, a lot of information. I think about all the work that Director Larva did on the, um, potential for this, um, middle school schedule, um, needs and, and it, how it will also, you know, look at high school schedules down the line. In the PowerPoint, there was, um, some high school, um, items, um, and ju- you know, but we did not have time to go through some of that, so I think that's to be continued as well. But for our community too, if you, it's all on Board Book and you're, you're, you're really encouraged to go in and, and look at the documents for both the schedule changes, you know, for the, um, conversation from, um, our strategic plan and Ray Queener and also, um, Jake Lorenz, uh, presentation too, which, what had a lot of data and just a lot of good reflection by Jake and, and the needs of our district. You know, speaking of challenges, these are challenges to think about our schedule and how we can best fit, uh, the, the daily desire experience of our students into a, a middle school schedule and also some high school schedules and all of that. So thank you. Next on our reports is the Policy Committee. So I'll turn it over to the Chair, um, Lopwood Kim.
Great. Well, uh, the Policy Committee met on Thursday, Thursday, September 8th and, uh, it was a short meeting, um, we did not have any policies for first reading and, uh, just brought forward a policy for the second reading, which we, we've, um, continued discussion on since our, uh, August board meeting. And that was Policy 208, Development, Adoption and Implementation of Policies. And as we just highlighted, uh, developing policies and having a good process for adopting and implementing policies is a major role of what a school board member does, uh, across the country. And so, uh, we had a little bit of a discussion, uh, as we were doing the second reading in August on the last item, um, on five, which is implementation and access to policies. And, uh, so the, the, a couple of changes that were, uh, were bringing forward and were discussed at the policy meeting were, uh, under B. Uh, and that was each school board member shall have access to school district policies. An electronic copy of the school district policies shall be placed on the district website. Paper copies shall be placed in the superintendent's office and shall be available for reference purposes to other interested persons. And then the other, uh, change was, uh, D, uh, which is, uh, the school board shall review policies at least once every four years. Uh, the superintendent shall be responsible for developing a system of periodic review, addressing approximately one quarter of the policies annually. In addition, the school board shall review the following policies annually. And there's, uh, four policies listed. So those were just the two changes brought forward to our Policy Committee after, uh, the August, uh, meeting. And, uh, and, uh, that was, uh, we, we really wanted to keep the meeting, uh, there, there's a lot of work that goes into bringing new policies forward and there's a number of policies that are being worked on right now, but weren't ready for the first reading, reading for this month. And then I'll just ask, uh, my, uh, colleagues, uh, Members Sandholm and Member, um, Sadowski, if there was anything in addition to that discussion at the September meeting, Policy Meeting.
Not anything to add.
Did I summarize that?
You, you summarized it really well, I think, um, and it was a good, it was just good to review it again after our last school board meeting and I think that, um, that we had a pretty thorough discussion. Member Sandholm.
And, um, with some reassurance from Superintendent Magus, um, and the number of policies we have, um, our administration felt confident that, uh, that they can meet a, a review of, uh, you know, a quarter of our policies annually and then, you know, hit everything once per four years. I still think there should be some discussion on what constitutes review, you know? I mean, there's probably some policies that, you know, again, the policy committee could look at and say, well, okay, we looked at that, there's no need to change anything, so we could probably count that in review, um, instead of having to come forward for board approval.
And I think you could, I mean, there's a broad range of review. We can, some of them do we look at every word and every, uh, of a, of a policy review. As you mentioned previously, Members Sandholm could involve reviewing a section and, and bring the board and suggest the changes or, you know, there's MSTA guidance, so it could be a broader, um, broader, slightly less intensive review of, of some of the policies given the hundred plus policies we have on books. So thank you.
I also think after a year or two of, of this policy has rewritten, you know, everybody has their field for it, that, that, that's gonna work, so.
And, um, this will appear on the consent agenda to be voted on. Um, is there any other discussion? I also did happen to, uh, pull out this year's family student handbook that just came in the mail and I just kind of wanted to tie it into this committee because I was reminded, uh, when I was looking at the consent book, uh, just as a chance to tell the parents that there's a huge section on the policies in the handbook and, and a section just on the policies that lists, um, a, a number, a summary of the, the district policies and then also, again, a number of pages related to the policies. And then also reminding families that, uh, they are on our website as well. So I, uh, when I was refreshing myself with the, the new student handbook, I wanted to tie it into the policy, uh, review committee, so. Uh, so that was, uh, the Policy Committee for this month, Chair Lopwood.
Thank you. That brings us to still on number nine, the report of the standing committees and our last is from Human Resources Business Services Committee. And, um, Member Oswald is gonna lead us through that since Chair Eater is not here tonight.
And Member Kirby, feel free to chime in anytime because, you know, we're not as prepared as our illustrious chair.
Um, so, um, we begin, always begin the, the beginning of the Business Services and HR meeting with our HR monthly summary, um, report where, um, we got a great, got some great feedback on the hiring that has been done and the thing of here that we're mostly staffed. Um, when we started the school year with most of our certified positions, we're still looking for some career professionals, but not anywhere near what we started last year's, um, last school year's with, which is fantastic news. Um, let's see, uh, we'll be voting, the, there'll be voting done on the final group contract of, with the National Conference of Firemen and Oilers and that happens next week on the 24th. So we're hoping to have that contract settled and then even start a new, that's on the whole cycle. Um, teachers on call for substitutes is, has been, um, extremely helpful and has been going really well, um, with bill rates as high as seventy-eight percent. When last year, the district, we could barely even get to fifty percent if we were lucky. So, um, I'm hoping that as, as we move forward, those rates will keep increasing. So then we have, um, the Business Services Report and with the transition and, um, the financial reports getting audited, we, we have just a short verbal, um, report, our enrollment report, so we'll start next month, so we'll see where we stand as compared to last year, starting there. Um, our child nutrition, oh, yeah, they, they had some things going on. Um, they, they provided us with the, with the total count for, um, summer meals, um, that they had. They, we had served eleven thousand four hundred and forty-four breakfasts this summer with twenty-one thousand eight hundred and forty-three lunches. So we provided thirty-three thousand two hundred and eighty-three summer meals over the summer. That's an incredible mountain, but, you know, thank you to the staff that, that worked so hard to make that happen and feed our kids. That's, that's incredible. Um, our free and reduced lunch numbers, uh, uh, you know, if, if you haven't filled out your free and reduced lunch form, still do, we have some time. You always can try to qualify, even if your situation changes over the year, but as of, as of the time of this report in August, um, we had students qualified for free at two thousand six hundred and forty-one students and those that qualified for reduced lunch, um, were five hundred and forty and there are some that, that applied but it didn't meet the threshold. So, um, you know, we have over thirty-one hundred students that are, you know, getting free or reduced lunch and that's, that's perfectly acceptable and, um, I am so happy that we're able to provide that service for families in need because that's, you know, kids that go hungry are not okay in school. Oh, what else do we have here? We have, uh, ba, 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 bum. Oh, I also wanted to highlight the need for twenty-six more kitchen help employees that we're still hiring, including dishwashers. Everybody knows how to wash a dish. You want a job? Come, come fill out an application. So then we have, we can move on to the facilities report. Um, they're providing some pictures, ICS is providing pictures of the, of, um, the administration building that's being under construction so far and it's getting exciting and Superintendent Magus has something to say.
Just a reminder to board members that there was a doodle poll looking for specific dates that Patty sent out. We're still waiting on just a couple of people. If you're interested in touring the site, if not, that's, that's great, but we're gonna have some tours in the coming week that, that Dave is, is, uh, trying.
Correct.
I didn't mean to scold anybody who's not.
Nope, that's all right. I was gonna mention, we gotta, we're gonna have that tour and, and I think we'll, we'll all be impressed with the work and the money that, um, what the money is paying for and then there'll be dollars well invested, I believe. Um, it, so, we have that going on. Um, I want to thank the summer cleaning staff, um, because, um, Dave Spooner, the director, you know, couldn't say enough good things about them cleaning our schools for the start of the school year and everything was fantastic and shiny and, well, you know, well, well cleaned. And so thank you so much for working so hard and for our kids. And the, the only other real highlight here is, um, as Mr. Spooner pointed out at the meeting, that he, he doesn't recall another time where he could say that there were no injuries in his department for an entire month. There was no workers' compensation reportable activities. Everything was zero. So that just shows our staff, we're working not just fast and hard, but smart and are pretty lucky too. There's always some luck involved in there. So, um, thank you staff for, and maintenance staff for, for being so careful and celebrate that victory for sure. Okay, then we have technology. Then they had a whole bunch of, of updating to do and opening accounts for kids and, um, you know, seeing the, the emails flying back and forth. So there was, there was a number of, um, account problems that, you know, uh, that they have to work through always, security stuff. And, um, it was noted that, uh, the new AV equipment for our school board meeting space is, has arrived. Um, some of them have arrived already and, and it, so, you know, that got me excited and, uh, asking questions. So you can always watch the meeting to see, you know, what some of the things are going to be in our new space. And that the two middle schools are getting new video security systems, which are extremely important with our current environments in schools. Our transportation report, um, highlighted that, uh, they have over three hundred and forty-three bus routes happening and needing to be updated to carry our kids to and from school and they also have to coordinate with Voyager. Um, we're still waiting on the arrival of, of two new buses. The order has gotten there, but, um, they are not gonna get here until maybe March of 2023, but, you know, the two new buses are two new buses and, and we'll be happy whenever they arrive, hopefully sooner than later. Uh, with, that's leaving the average bus fleet age at seven point four years because I'm a nerd and I like stats like that. With the current average mileage of all our buses at seventy-three thousand mi- five hundred miles, um, a goal of the transportation effort is to keep that under sixty and so with the two new bus arrivals, you know, it'll get closer to our goal. And also included was, um, the new pricing that, um, for the contract with Voyager. And also included was the new pricing that, for the contract with Voyager Bus to provide services for some of our students. And those rates from last year have gone up 8.2%. And so board members will want to look at how expensive or not they think it is for, for hiring Voyager to help us with our transportation needs. Next we have the recommended resolutions and I would love for our, our new business services director, Simone, to come and explain the maximum certi, the maximum levy certification. That's all full of words, to the rest of the people that, on the board, so we're all clear on what we're voting on.
I'd love to. I have the same enthusiasm for, as our, my predecessor, still loves the levy. Thank you. So I'm asking, or we are asking for the maximum levy to be certified tonight. It is for the 22 pay 23 cycle. Just a little backstory, the annual levy certification is an important part of a school district to set their annual levies. Tonight, we're asking the school board to approve the maximum levy amount. This is a usual process that gets done every year that we start that in August. I'm able to go in and fulfill about six slides with MDE. We enter our leases, our debt, we review all that information. And then I come to the school board in September for approval. Overall, we are anticipating an increase over zero tax neutral. So I don't, I can't give any numbers yet because I'm still working with MDE to finalize dollar amounts. But we hope to come in less than last year. And we did have to reduce our debt excess penalty by almost 40% because some of our debt dropped off of our levy. And debt excess is cyclical and caused the levy to go up and down depending on the adjustment. And then we also sold an LTFM bond last year, as you all know. And that we are using to help a pay as you go LTFM to, to fund LTFM projects. So LTFM adjust, adjustments are also cyclical. And last year, we sold the bond to cover and pay for health and safety projects for LTFM projects that we have to estimate what the cost will be. And then we need to reconcile what the actual costs are. We do this at MDE every year. And if we have a pay as you go bond, we have more freedom to go in and ask for reimbursement of that money. So it sits with our financial advisor. I run a monthly report. We have specific codes coded to these new LTFM bonds. And then I can go in and get a reimbursement. So we pay for it upfront and then we get the money afterwards. We have a little bit more freedom when we have LTFM bonds. So they, they are recommended and they are good for our district, especially for our size. So the district also added three new leases this year. So we added the Tech Village, Lake Superior College for office space and UHG. So that also can add, you know, increase your levy. Let's see, on December 20th of 2022 this year, we will be presenting a truth and taxation meeting. And at that time, we will give you real numbers. But I am very hopeful that we can, we'll keep it as low to zero as possible, but I think it's going to be a couple of percents above that. Let's see, tonight, I'm going to ask for the maximum levy certification. And then once it is approved, I will send it in tonight. And we want to show that to our residents that we are obligated to review the levy and we are doing this in the best interest of our community. This, and the reason we don't, I want to bring this up too, especially for our delusional tribune. This, we, the schools cannot present our real numbers yet in September because we're, our levy is set by the state or MDE. Where the city can set their own levies. So you'll see in the newspaper, they're giving, you know, 8.9% when I, I can't do that yet because I'm actually still working with MDE. On, on trying to, you know, decrease our levy amount. So that is why schools cannot give real numbers in September. And I do have a state statute for you, so that'll be helpful for, if anyone wants it, I can email it to. Thank you. Are there any questions? Yes.
Just a question more to help verify, you mentioned three leases?
Yes.
The ALC, AEL at Tech Village?
Correct.
The District Services Center at UHG and then the Lake Superior College?
Yes.
The Lake Superior College is a very small lease, very, relatively inconsequential materially, but more to have presence there, correct?
That is correct. And, but it is a lease and I am required to put it onto our levy.
Right.
And then what happens is I, I send a copy of the lease document. So MDE sees everything and they keep it in their file. And so every time we get a new lease or drop the lease off, but if we get a new one, I have to send all that documentation to MDE. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Maybe you can just stay right there because I'm going to, I'm going to jump ahead to the, to the game worker rates in case there's any question for you on that. But at the, at the business meeting, we discussed a presentation from, from Simone. Who says that they're asking for the game worker rates to change. Which involves a variety of different athletic activities that we do. And the people that help run the games and make it successful, such as ticket takers or game managers, the PA people, scoreboard people. And those rates of pay, pay rates are increasing at the request of the athletic directors. And that it does not include actual referees because those are governed by the Minnesota State High School League. So if there's any questions, Simone can answer that, I hope.
Yeah, the, the two ADs, historically here would recommend, requested from HR. And it would go through because, you know, they have to do requisitions and whatnot. It hasn't been done in several years here and they asked for a $5 increase. And with my, my rough math, it's approximately $2,400 increase for each site. That affects the fall, winter and spring sports.
And, and you had said that these all come from, from ticket sales and are self-supporting for the most part?
For the most part, yes, that is correct. It will get budgeted right back to those sites, yes, and those budgets and sports.
And, and will this, does this, or will this in the future maybe fall back on participation fees if they need to increase those fees to cover this or?
It could potentially, yes. So we get gate fees, concession stand fees, athletic participation fees. All that is what our revenue comes from.
So I guess, you know, maybe we all should be buying popcorn when we go to those events?
Yes, it is all very helpful.
Concession doesn't probably go back to the district, though, does it?
Well, it stays in their fund.
Yeah.
And we, you know, we brought the student activities all into the general fund, so it is coded separately. And it does kind of just fund itself to buy more, more popcorn.
Good to know. All right. Well, thank you very much for that.
You're very welcome.
I just wanted to chime in on, on that part that, you know, I, I appreciate the work of our activities director to, you know, look at just kind of generally what, you know, it doesn't get, it's not, you know, it doesn't get a lot of attention. But yet the workers, and I noticed too that we're short on workers. So, you know, we're still looking, our, our sites, our middle school and our high school are still looking for like, you know, ticket help. Or, you know, monitoring the doors or, you know, doing the game clocks or the books. You know, much like everything else, we used to be able to find people to do that. And, you know, it's, it's still a, it's still a challenge. And the, the referees that are hired for athletics and all of those athletics is, is set by the, the association of officials. That isn't necessarily wrapped into the Minnesota State High School League, could be wrong. But they, they have their own association and they set their, their fees. And so they get increases, not every year, but that association kind of sets the general fee for the state for referees. And so that naturally gets a little bump, but workers don't, you know? And so I, I appreciate the work that you're willing to collaborate with our activities directors to help in, in those areas as well.
Thank you.
Well, I actually had a follow-up question about the applications for education or, yeah, educational benefits, the free and reduced lunch forms. How are we sitting on those numbers? And, you know, are, are they looking good? Because I know in, in the past couple of years.
That's a great question.
We were collecting those, correct? And they are really tied to certain funds from what I understand.
Our compensatory.
So it's really important for families. I just want to point out, it's really important for all families to fill out that form, correct?
Cool, that is very true. And I did speak with food service today and the forms are still coming in. I, I'll have better, I'll have numbers for you next month.
Yep, that's fine.
But we are, every site I know is actively pursuing getting those forms filled out. And everyone's really trying hard to do that. We offer an online portal. And then those forms are also sent home in all the back to school packets, so as you know.
Yeah, just, yeah, just to remind all the parents, I'm going, so I'm guilty, I should do mine too, so.
Okay, great. And I, I can give you some better information next month.
Great, that's fine, thank you.
You're welcome.
But I believe the hard deadline that actually helps us the most is October 1st.
For everything for enrollment, yeah.
And, and, you know, but that doesn't prohibit people from filling it out later on either. But you know, if you can get it in and so we can account for it by October 1st, that's fantastic.
And I would just like to remind too that the, the household salary that's on those forms is generated by the fed, federal government. We don't put that number in there. And it is, I, it is accounted for every year and it can't go up and it can't come down. They do consider our economy when they're preparing that form for us. Thank you.
Ready to move on?
All right, thank you. And then, so next we, we're going to talk about hourly positions and some substitute pay increases that are being proposed by our HR department. So Director Sevens is going to talk about that.
Thank you. So you'll see on the consent agenda and as we discussed at the HR Finance Business Services Committee. We are proposing roughly a $3, give or take, increase to our hourly substitute pay rate. There is a few that are maybe a little bit above that, a little bit below that, just depending on where we're at with other contracted rates. But for the most part, we're looking at about a $3 increase. I do want to point out one adjustment. After we met on the HR Finance Committee, there was a discussion about increasing our paraprofessional rate, which was at 1350. And we are, that discussion came, we were going to increase it to $15 to be competitive because we're not seeing the substitutes from the paraprofessionals. As we're working through Teachers on Call and they did a study for us, so we, we believe bringing it to $15. So that has been updated on this sheet that's in your packet. But there are two pieces in that paraprofessional area that didn't get updated with the $15 rate. So I just wanted to point that out. At the bottom of that section, it's the last page three. At the top of that page, you'll see the physical therapist assistant is at 14 and we would bump that to 15. And then the graphic artist, at the very bottom, there's a grouping there, we would also bump that to 15. So the, the majority reason here is that these rates primarily are have the minimum, the minimum rates in the state. And it's just not competitive anymore for us to get hourly staff to come in. And we want to be able to compensate that hourly staff that come in and, and take these positions and get, get more help.
So really, when I listened to this in HR business and, and I didn't really catch it until I looked at, at this over the weekend. That these are not increasing the rate of our hires. These are simply rates for substitutes for these positions?
Correct.
Okay.
There are some hourly positions.
There are some hourly as well that we.
Oh, are there?
That we do hire, just on an hourly basis, if they're under the threshold of being a contract employee, we pay them at an hourly rate. So they wouldn't necessarily be a substitute through, through Teachers on Call. But we also have some substitutes like clericals and other pieces that these are the rates that govern that as well.
Okay, so the hourly rate, so I guess I never realized that our hourly employees weren't considered contract employees? Or they're, they're hired as hourlies? What did you say there?
Yeah, they're, they're hired as hourly rate because their, their hours worked are less than a contracted amount.
Okay.
So like our cafeteria playground monitor is a great example because those are positions we try to fill every year. And our schools really rely on that additional support. But they only work during the lunch hour and the food service time and the playground hours. So they, they don't meet that threshold of the hours worked to be in a contract.
And, and another question that I have, I bet is just, I, I mean, I, I look at all of the, do you think all of these positions that you list on our chart are actually being, I mean, not only, I mean, we're, we're increasing some of them in this substitute area. But do we even have them in, as a regular employee or an hourly? Are there some of these that are listed under any of their food service or maintenance or community ed or building operations? That we actually don't even have that position, but I know it's important to like list it in case we do get one?
Yes, there are definitely positions listed here that we don't have in bargaining units, even as a higher hourly worker, hourly person.
And then, has it been, I know we've struggled to get substitutes in every way, shape or form in whatever position. And so I'm, I know that the bump in our increase is hoping to translate into our ability to fill even our paras or even our clerical. Or some of our swim instructors or our satellite manager. But we still, would it still be fair to say that there would be times when even though we bumped up the stipend, we're not able to get substitutes in these positions?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, I would say for the para piece, what we're seeing is there's just only so many.
I know.
Paras and depending on where the work is located, they may or may not be interested. But Teachers on Call did a study related to our surrounding school districts and what they're paying for their sub rates. And we were quite a bit lower. And, and we, we would like to be a little bit higher. However, this rate that we're proposing of 15 for the paras is below our contracted rate. And we want to be really careful about how we pay our subs in comparison to how we pay our actual employees.
And on here, you know, it lists that we're raising the substitute teacher pay from 125 to 150. And for certified retired teachers from 0130 to 155. But the teacher hourly rate of pay remains the same. Is that because that's included in the contract?
It is included in the contract and, and my apologies, that increase actually happened in January of last year. So that there is no change. That actually was already approved, sorry.
That's okay, it's just there in red, so I kind of let it have.
Sorry, that got, that got missed. It wasn't an update, so it would be under, it should be under the black. Those 150 and 155 are the current rates as of January. But the hourly rate, yes, that is because of the contracted hourly amount.
So I kind of want to back up to the Teachers on Call bit because it ties into this. And, and this state date and time, you know, we're only two weeks plus into the school year. I just kind of felt uncomfortable with quoting our, our, you know, sub rates and, and fill it, the fill rate that 70% or whatever it was, 50 to 70%. Because it's very early in the school year and the sub demand isn't real high just yet. What concerned me there when, when I looked at that was the fact that, you know, we had 160 plus teachers. That were probably registered within the district to substitute last year. And probably the same people would have been on the books in 2018, 19, 1920 and probably even 2021. You know, and now at this point in time, we only have 60 of those teachers back. That's what I saw there. I, I've come down to this page, so I, I haven't brought that up to that. So is that right? We've only, Teachers on Call has only signed up 60 of our former substitute pool?
I'd have to go back and look, but I believe there were 60 that have completed the process in its entirety. And then there's still another 40, 30 that are filling, finishing, filling out paperwork.
And, and personally, I can say that going through the process is not as easy as I'd like. I, I wished it would have been for, for everybody that would want to come back and sub. So I think we made it a little bit challenging for our sub pool to just jump right back into subbing for our district. When if we would not have gone to Teachers on Call, they would, they would be there for us more than. for us, uh, more than likely they would be there for us, ready to go here from, you know, this date going forward. Um, so hopefully we can get more subs signed up, because I think, you know, the fact that we only have sixty signed up and, and the forty are dragging the feet dand or struggling with that process, um, leads me to believe we're going to have some challenges, um, as we, as we get deeper into the school year. Uh, and then with the teacher hourly rate, so they, um, are they getting paid from teachers on call?
No, that's a, an hourly rate that if, if a teacher is doing additional, that's the twenty-two hourly.
I thought they got their, their hourly rate of pay for substituting in the past.
Well, it depends on.
Whatever their, whatever their contract rate was.
Yeah, it depend, the contract has all kinds of different rates for whatever purposes, so it depends on the work they're doing.
Well, again, so whatever masters, whatever level they are on the contract, they would get their hourly rate of pay if they filled in for another teacher.
Yeah, there, there are, there are overloads, there are different, yeah, there are different rates of pay too, if they're doing homebound. So in some cases they are getting prorata, um.
Okay. Yeah, I, 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 I guess I had heard something that I'm concerned too about the motivation of our staff to fill in for absent staff if we've created some issues there that we're not all aware of, but. Issues where, with how we're paying our staff that might fill in for other staff that are absent if we can't fill those positions with teachers on call. So are they, you know, are they getting paid in a way so that, that it, it counts towards their high five, it counts towards their, are they getting their pro, are they getting prorata? Or are they getting this?
There are a lot of cases where they're getting prorata, but the contract defines how those pay rates work depending on the work that they're doing.
I, I think they just will follow up on this at some point in time, I think, we'll see where this goes.
Thank you, and I know as well, there was a question for, uh, the President Fisher had asked about, um, I can't remember the exact terminology of it, but counting towards their years of service that is substitutes, it used to count, how we just need to find a way of tracking that in some way, right?
Yes, towards their teachers retirement, yes, through teachers on call, there isn't an automatic pay into that, um, setup because teachers on call is, is not a organization that would qualify for the TRA program. But we are looking into if it's a availability for those employees to be able to buy back service credit with TRA if that's the case.
Yeah, and, and we've had substitutes approach us on that too, or there's been a, a situation where somebody was concerned about that and, and that, yeah, they aren't able to get their subwork, uh, set up with the TRA system.
Right, and I just wanted to ask, thanks for both, uh, you know, both sides of the labor management process for working on it, because I know it's something that we're working on. And also, Director, Director Severance, the, the hundred or so that we have on the list, what we found is many of those were kind of, have been on the list for years and were not necessarily still actively subbing for us or interested in subbing too, so the sixty is more of a reflective active number of subs as opposed to having a, a list that had people who hadn't subbed.
Yes, and, and I can do a deeper dive into that, but when we say that active, they may have subbed once in the last several years and they were on the list, they may have subbed in the last five years, so even the hundred, the hundred and sixty number, it, it may not be, and most likely is not that high as somebody that was an active participant in, in.
And I can think of examples of, of those individuals too. So what, what, what do you think would be a good number for teachers on call to have signed up to, to cover our needs or to meet our needs as we get deeper into the year?
I think ideally having at least a hundred between teachers and paras would be great. And again, I think they're, even having the larger number of available substitutes doesn't necessarily mean we're going to be able to fill every position.
No.
Because a lot of times they have preferences, um, depending on, they may not want to, you know, work at East, they want to work at Denfeld. So I think trying to, you know, convince them to, that we can have you work anywhere and get them, get them into the building, so they may have some preconceived notion of where they want to work, but we're trying to, to, uh, to talk them through that and have them take some opportunities.
Well, I, I'm hopeful that this, this can work for us, um, I, I, I would like to see it be successful, I guess, if, if, uh, if this is a good way in the future and the way to go. Um, but, but again, I do have some concerns and I think we do want to keep our, our eyes on this, is it, is this meeting our needs? Um, as we work through the school year and, uh, what other, what other hurdles or challenges are we going to encounter along the way, so we'll see where it goes.
Well, I, I just wanted to remind you that in the contract that we signed with them, you know, we can give them a thirty day notice at any time and take it back. Are we prepared to take it back at this point? I don't know, I don't think so, I don't think we have the right staff in place to take it back yet, but, you know.
I, I don't disagree with you there.
Yeah.
And I, I, I would like to chime in, like, I, I think you'll have to give every, everything, every new initiative, whatever it is, you know, longer than three months or even longer sometimes than a year. I've worked with teachers on call, I've gone through the, all of the things, and I, I actually feel as a sub that's been here for, subbing for seven years, that what, what teachers on call asked me to go through, the PowerPoints, the videos, the training, the updates. I'm a teacher, I think I, I know how to handle classroom, but they actually have really good, um, educational videos. And I, I, I hope that what that will do is really give some newer subs in our district some confidence that our district takes their service, um, as an important service. Um, I, I haven't gotten as much attention in our previous, um, times with being a sub, I, I haven't gotten as much check-in. I'm getting emails, I'm getting phone calls to just to offer help and to, to work through things, so I think that, I think that once we get going, the attention that teachers on call are giving to our su, our, our substitutes, at least in the teaching ring, is, is really effective, I think it will, it will really motivate, um, especially younger people who maybe, um, haven't been a sub as a long time. You know, Paul and I, we've been subs for a long time, and so we do see some of the hiccups. But I think some of our new subs, once, you know, I, I think they'll like the, the information and the attention to detail.
And I'm hopeful with their recruiting plan, um, that they're coming up now. They'll be working with colleges and trying to work with students and getting that maybe not quite ready, but they can come in and do para work and find those different locations within the area to try to find new subs too.
And actually on my way to the HR business meeting, I heard on the radio, their radio commercial for them. So I, I failed to mention that at the meeting, but it, but yeah, it, and I was impressed that, that they've reached out in that way. Because I heard it, so.
Yeah, a couple of things, uh, thank you Director Severance for, um, bringing forth the, uh, increase for the subrates. Uh, that's something as board members we've been talking about and wanting to see, uh, over the last few years, so I really appreciate that as a board member. Um, I, I have just a clarification, um, with the, um, the sub list, I guess, do subs every year need to kind of reapply to be subs in our district, is that?
They don't, um, so teachers on call, once you're a sub in their system and have gone through the hire process, unless you tell them you no longer want to be a sub, you're, you're in their system. And for the substitutes that are not held through teachers on call that we employ, they're always considered an active sub in our system once they've applied unless they tell us otherwise.
Okay, 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 great, thanks for clarifying that. And then the last thing I happened to, um, after the August twenty-third, uh, HR staff welcome, uh, event, and I talked to some people involved with that training, uh, from DFT as well as some people that were there, and they thought it was a really excellent training and that there was a lot of big community building that happened, so uh, thank you for your role with that as well.
No more questions about this, okay, thank you, Director Severance.
Thank you.
Um, moving on, we just got a few more things, because, um, August finances presented later, there weren't any fundraisers, there were bids or RFPs or votes, so that saves us a lot of time. We have two contracts to, um, that highlight here, one is, um, Cook County is wanting to contract, uh, with us an agreement for math teachers through AEO, and so there is an, an agreement here, um, to approve that allows, um, Cook County students to access our math teachers online. I just really hope the broadband initiative for rural areas is, is going forward for them because, you know, cooking schools, you're, you're talking, uh, BWCA kids that live up on the Gunflint Trail and, yeah, been there numerous times, I can tell you reception's kind of sketchy. So, um, that, I, I hope this is successful and meets their needs and is a plus to us because we get some money for all these kids to enroll. And the other contract we have is for St. Louis County, um, who I'd like to thank for, again, once again, for the three-year grant that they've, um, given us money to have check and connect mentors, um, up, and they're located at four sites, plus ALC, which is Denfeld, East, Fordham, Lincoln Park, and now ALC. Um, all fifteen positions for checking connect mentors who are medical health practitioners are, um, are filled and, you know, working hard, I assume, in, um, these first few weeks of school identifying their case loads. Um, other than that, we have district properties update with things on the hill going well, um, our track at Denfeld is, is hopefully going to get resolved soon, it seems to have been on the, on the list for years now, um. Then we have, um, um, had some pictures of the construction up on the hill, and, you know, that gets me excited for touring, so please reply to that beautiful because I'd like to get up there and see. We all have to check in and get hard hats and safety, that's best, so make sure that you do that. Um, then expenditure, expenditure contracts, we have, um, quite a few of those that, that have been entered into on our behalf because they're below the threshold, um, which are very exciting, they're, they'll benefit, um, special services and OE and early childhood and facilities, so that's a good thing, no cost contracts with the Lake City Superior Swim, Swim Club, Children's Dental Services, the University of Minnesota and State Colleges and Universities, Yes, Duluth, the Minnesota Humanity Center, HDC, and Booster at the club at Homecroft. Those are all no cost and benefit our district, I certainly hope. Um, and then the revenue contracts, um, are just about Harbor City International that, um, picks up our, their lunches from um, our school district to feed their kids, and I did get feedback from, um, Mr. Benzine in Business Services and who had contacted our, um, our child nutrition person, Ms. Oaks, who said that all of the numbers, um, for Harbor City are included in the Denfeld numbers for lunches, including the summer ones, um, because that's where they pick up their lunches from, is Denfeld. So, that is the conclusion, oh, wait, grant reports, sorry, we have a grant, one grant from, oh, now I lost that, I have so many. It is, it is, it is a good grant from the Northland, Northland Community Foundation for twenty-seven thousand?
Four thousand.
Oh, four thousand, darn, I was, I was a hopeful wish in there, okay. Other than that, that concludes the business report, sorry, it was so long, but we have lots of good stuff going on.
Yeah, well, it was a hundred and sixty-three pages of stuff, so yeah, it takes time, always. Any questions? We'll kind of ask them along our way, but.
I have a, uh, support question, is it, how hard is it to put together that three hundred plus page PDF, is it, is it cumbersome to do or is it?
You mean for the business?
Yeah, or for the consent agenda, that's like for number ten.
It's, it's getting easier, but we have everything in mind now, so we have it all in the web. The bar, I just have to adjust eight hundreds.
If it was, you mean, or else, uh, we would want to know if it's okay?
My, my question is, is there a better way we could put this together to, so we can navigate it, you know, I mean, it's just, it's really hard to just find a page where you want to, you know, to be when you, when, if you want to go back to something, or if you jump ahead to something and we want to scroll down to that page, and it's a, it's a challenge when you've got a hundred and sixty-three pages to be on the right page, so I don't know how we could break that out, if we could break out the, the grants, or break, you know, maybe even break it out by some of the topics.
I do find it easier to use the quick view and rather than the agenda report on there because they're shown as attachments.
Ah, that's what I'm not doing tonight, I was wondering why, I, usually I happen into, but I open it under an agenda and not the quick view. Uh, okay, that could happen too.
Because after every single, um, agenda item, it, the attachment is there.
It's right there. Yeah, that could be too. Yeah, because I was paging through to go back to that, you know, maybe the increase in stipends or game workers or something, but, or to get to the no con, no cost contract stuff, yeah. Any other comments? Okay, so number ten is our general board committee updates. For some reason, that seems like it's not in, isn't that usually after the consent agenda? So it'd be like number eleven in consent, but number ten is general board committee updates, and that's for any of us to share anything that's going on in a committee that you represent the board at, and, and.
I do have something.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to let people know that, um, at Community Action Duluth, they recently got a grant from Charter Communications, which has funded a computer lab for the general education classroom that is now, um, permanently there, and they are actually going to be paying people up to the age of twenty-four that have not received their diploma to come there to study for their GED and complete it, and then they will get paid for working towards it and, and, uh, completing their GED. So if anybody wants any, um, information on that, please call Community Action because it's a fantastic opportunity for the people, for people that, uh, didn't quite make it and want to come back, so.
Any other committee reports for board members?
I don't, this month, usually the perks and rewards begins before this meeting and, uh, we'll need it tomorrow.
And so that brings us to number eleven, our consent agenda, we've all had a copy of that also on our board book that contains things like approval of minutes from past board meetings, um, it has the action items from HR, so it would be like our staffing report, the substitute rates, the game worker rates, um, all of our finance is on, uh, the, the Cook County tuition agreement and the St. Louis County mentor contract is there, there's been diploma requests, oh, none tonight, but field trip requests, um, are also on our consent agenda. So are our first readings from our approval of our policy, and then under, uh, committee reports, it would be the, just the report, um, and that is our consent agenda, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move the consent agenda.
Is there a second, Member LaForte can make the motion, a second is Member Sadowski. Is there any, anything that anybody wants to pull out to discuss or ask a question about? We tend to ask them as the committee goes through, so seeing none, um, I'm looking for, um, an approval of the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, our consent agenda passes. That brings us to our agenda item number twelve, which is our resolutions for, um, committee reports. So I've asked, um, board members to read those and, um, we'll start with the resolution of grants, awards.
This would be twelve C. Resolution, acceptance of grants, awards to Duluth Public Schools. Whereas Minnesota statute four six five point zero three requires a school district to accept grants by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full, and whereas acceptance of grants in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the, of the Duluth Public Schools. Now, therefore be resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below described grant from said organization in accordance with the terms set forth herein. Yet further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to this organization. Uh, the organization is the Northland Foundation, and the grant award is for four thousand dollars. Uh, annually, the Northland Foundation offers grants to develop and or continue, uh, three efforts to ensure alignment. to ensure alignment between early childhood programming to grade three in areas such as transitions, curriculum equity, family engagement. I move resolution, I move resolution B nine two two three nine one seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Member Sadowski, seconds. All those in favor of resolution, um, for the grants, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Next will be the resolution for the maximum levy certification.
Sure. Um, item twelve A, um, resolution for the maximum levy certification. Whereas the Duluth School Board of Independent School District, number seven oh nine, Saint Louis County, Minnesota, will hold a regular school board meeting on December twentieth, two thousand twenty-two at six P M in Media Center at this high school, three oh one North Fortieth Avenue East, and will receive input from the public on the proposed certified levy for two thousand twenty-two, payable in two thousand twenty-three. Therefore be it resolved that the school board proposed the steering for the tax levy for Independent School District, number seven oh nine, for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-two, payable two thousand twenty-three at the maximum amount. And that's moving resolution B nine dash two two dash three nine one five.
All those in favor, oh, it needs a second?
Second.
Member Oswald, seconds. All those in favor of the maximum levy, uh, resolution, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero. And our last, um, item is, is, um, the acceptance of donations.
Whereas Minnesota Statute four six five point oh three requires a school, a school district to accept donations by resolution where expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full. And whereas acceptance of the donations in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below described donations from said organizations in accordance with the terms set forth herein. And be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various individuals and organizations. This includes, um, the donors of Lakesbury College Manufacturing Quality Lab, the Greyhound Volleyball Booster Club, our very own Mr. Jason Crane, Hemi Raha, and Louis Smith. And these are all donating east, Denfeld, and Stowe. So I move resolution B dash nine dash twenty-two dash thirty-nine sixteen.
Is there a second? Sir, Member Kirby seconded. All those in favor?
Nope.
Oh, that's a roll call, okay.
Sorry, it has to be roll called by, by state statute. So, Member Kirby?
Yes.
Member Lafferty Kemp?
Yes.
Chair local?
Yes.
I vote yes. Member Sadowski?
Yes.
Member Sandholm?
Yes.
And then passes six zero.
That concludes, um, item twelve of our agendas, so it's on to thirteen and it's special resolutions and action items. Seeing none, it goes to number fourteen. Are there any questions or other information school board members or student reps have for tonight's meeting? I just want to, um, share that I drove by yesterday when I was coming back up to U H D by Lowell and won the, the, the entry and exit lanes are all marked and there's one way to get out. And I also noticed that even though in our cow meeting in August, the conversation was that it wasn't, um, deemed a, a real school zone, so, or they weren't gonna put a sign up, but I noticed they have one of those big, uh, flashing school zone head signs on, um, what would it be? I, I'm not, Mike Rice like wrote it.
Professor.
Yeah, so that was really cool to see that it had, it had, has already had a, a effect in the end. Member Lafferty Kemp.
Okay, great. I, I just, uh, wanted to remind board members, you got this notice from our school board association that the twenty twenty-two fall, uh, N S B A advocacy tour is gonna start tomorrow. And it's a Zoom meeting. They, in the past, used to have them in person, but, uh, it's Zoom and, um, they have a metro one, a Southern Minnesota, a central, but you can go on any date that works for you. And so it's Wednesday, Thursday night at six thirty and then Friday, this Friday morning at nine A M and then next Tuesday. So if you're interested in both learning more about this past session as well as looking ahead at what our school board association is getting input to advocate on, uh, and it's gonna be a budget year this year, so, um, you'll learn a little bit more about budgeting as well. I've always enjoyed, uh, participating in that, so I can forward that to you, but it all should have gone in your, um, on your email, uh, school board email today, I think.
And I had, I attended part of the one for the northern school districts that was last week. And, um, it is very informative, so I think, you know, I think I'm gonna sign up for, for another one to catch the part I missed. But, um, you know, it, try to go, um, the legislative part of it that highlights their priorities and that sort of thing, um, is really informative and especially for, for, remember Lafferty Kemp and I, I believe, were both still, um, delegates to their, to their assembly to determine what is, um, the N S B A's legislative priorities, so.
And Member Soraya Crawford?
Yes, I just wanted to say real quick before the board meeting wraps up that, um, last Fri, well, yes, last Friday, um, I can't really recall what the team name was, but our football team won and I believe, um, two years. The first game, one, the first game in two years.
Yeah.
Yeah, I read about that.
Thank you, yeah. Important to recognize those, those milestones. And I, I just want to highlight exactly what, um, Member Lafferty Kemp and Oswald said too about, um, I've been going to the N S B A coffee and conversation. They, they, they had one this morning and they covered, um, information about, now I can't remember, but it was good. And then they also have N S B A, um, board chair and conversation with other boards, but they do encourage anyone, uh, that's on a board to, to be able to join those conversations as well. And I find they're from eight to nine, usually Friday morning, uh, once a month. And I, I just find those really, um, a, a good opportunity to hear from other school board members because it's really interesting what's happening, um, in other districts across the state, uh, with school boards and their, their, their agendas and what they're, what they're working on in policy, what their challenges are, what their successes are. I think I learn a lot from that too.
We had also mentioned that upcoming, there's an A M S D, um, conference that, that are some trainings that, that involve school board. And also, uh, I, I believe the N S B A phase four registration is open too. We are just in phase four training. All good learning opportunities.
Yeah, the A M S D, I, I was gonna send an email to, um, Executive Secretary Pickett to share with you. It's November ten and it, it's, it is like a mini N S B A convention. They'll have, uh, sessions and they'll have other things, um, for board members. And, you know, A M S D is fairly new. Um, Superintendent Vegas saw the desire to be a part of that organization. We hadn't been under other leadership. And so, um, I have been attending as a board chair, but any one of us can and should come along. They're virtual. It's usually seven thirty in the morning on Fridays. Um, they're very good at keeping it from seven thirty to nine, but I would really, you know, if you're interested, I, you know, I would like to be able to share those dates and, and see if you'll come aboard every now and then. And, um, because those are also very informative. Yeah, I think that's it. I'm looking for, then it brings us to fifteen to adjournment. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. I, Member Oswald, the second. I, Member Sandholm, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned.